And we are now live.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome. It is Tuesday, July 7th at 6:00 PM, and this is the regularly scheduled Montrose City Council meeting. We are going to start our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight Dave Frank, Councilmember Dave Frank, is going to lead us in the pledge. So when you see the flag, Mr. Frank, you can begin.
And where is the share screen? The great big green one, there it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Frank. Thank you. Next on our agenda is roll call by City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Next, item four, Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell. Do we have any changes to the agenda, including additions and deletions?
I have an addition for this evening. We'll call it 4A. Jim Austin, the Director of Montrose County Public Health, is going to give us an update on county and state positions on the coronavirus.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Austin, on short notice, for coming to our meeting based on questions we had in our work session yesterday. And rather than the city trying to interpret and repeat the county information, we thought it'd be best to invite you here tonight and have an opportunity to speak to everyone in the meeting and everyone who watches the meeting online or on television, to give us an update where we are as a county, what's open, what's not open, where can folks get tested. Any of that information would be really helpful. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to you now. Thank you. You're actually just there. Now you're unmuted, so you could...
Okay, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Coronavirus has certainly been on our mind for a number of months now, and it has been more than on our mind. It has occupied us here at the Health Department. Let me say, first of all, just about testing, since you raised that. A couple of options for people who want to get tested, obviously, they can see their healthcare provider, and virtually all providers are doing the swabbing in their offices. Also, Delta County Health Department is one of 30-some-odd locations around the state, the closest one to here, where people can call, and they can go even without an order and get tested. And so, Delta County Health Department, the number there is 874-2165. I don't believe it's drive-up. I think you do need a reservation. But people can call them, and so testing is available either here locally through your provider or through Delta County Public Health. The State Health Department has issued a number of statewide public health orders, beginning in March. We are on the eighth version of the public health order, and it takes a bit of work keeping up with the changes and making sure to communicate those, not only internally, but to all of our customers and fellow citizens and business and industry stakeholders. I field lots of calls from businesses. It runs the gamuts from salons to events to restaurants to auctions, everything you can imagine. The public health order is generally around 45 pages long, and I have no expectation that people have the inclination to read that. And so, part of our job is to try to keep up with these changes and to communicate them, hopefully accurately, the first time, depending on what the inquiries are. So I'll talk more in just a minute about the order and some of the frequently asked questions. But as far as an update on the outbreak itself, I believe you've received those from Dr. Dragman. Of course, he heads our pandemic response as our medical advisor. He's the best person to get the clinical information from. But as of today, July 7th, hospital census is 21, one person in the hospital with COVID. And we get results daily. Sometimes we get them in batches. We may not receive results for a day or two or three, and they may be lumped together. But so far, we have 191 positive COVID tests. As you're aware, these are the ones normally from the swab that's taken in the nasal passages. People can also contact the hospital and get antibody testing. That's a blood draw, which indicates past infection. But as far as the positives, the nasopharyngeal swabs, which are the most common tests, 191 positives right now. I wanted to draw your attention to two of the latest orders. These were effective back on June 30th, so they're, well, they're right out a week old. One is the governor, excuse me, the State Health Department issued two public health orders. One has to do, we call it the mask order, but it's for face coverings. And this has been in place now for many weeks. And so, the latest one was, flip-flopping to it right here, was effective on June 30th. It expires on July 20th unless it's extended, rescinded, superseded, or amended. And so, we'll just have to wait, wait and see what happens. I want to talk a little bit about the mask order. There's some misconceptions about it. This is an order for all businesses and government functions. There's some requirements that are cross-cutting and apply to all. This is one of these. And the main provision is that if workers, now, this is employees, this is not the public, not patrons, but workers who may routinely or consistently come within six feet of other workers or the public are considered to be in close proximity to others and must wear medical or non-medical face coverings. It covers the worker's nose and mouth unless doing so would inhibit the individual's health. So there's always been an allowance for health-based reasons. It just says very simply that workers with health issues that preclude them from wearing a face covering must document these concerns with their employer. I got a call from a gentleman this last week. I had a concern about a restaurant drive-in and the worker wearing a mask. And so, I was asking him some questions, and I was telling him the face covering provision, that it's within, regularly or routinely, within six feet. And I asked him about his concern, and he'd gone through the drive-through. And he told me, he said, "Well, wait a minute." He said, "I'm probably six feet away from them. I mean, we're both stretching our arms out to pay and to hand off the order." And I said, "That may be true." And I said, "In that case, they would not be required to wear a face covering if they were six feet away from you." And so, there's just, some folks feel that masks need to be worn all the time, but it's within the six feet where there's the increased likelihood of droplets being transmitted. That's the point. Also, on the 30th of June, the rather extensive public health order was amended. This is the eighth amended. It's called the Safer at Home and in the Vast Great Outdoors Public Health Order, issued by the Executive Director of the State Health Department. And one of the points of this that can be a bit confusing for folks is when you hear a question of what requirements are, and the answer is it depends. And the reason it depends is the public health order is structured around different types of activities and businesses. And so, depending on the type of business, in addition to the general cross-cutting requirements, there are about 10 appendices to the order. And so, there are particular requirements. For example, for limited healthcare, chiropractic, optometry, those would be examples of limited healthcare. There are particular requirements for restaurants. There are particular requirements for day camps, residential camps. Those are lumped in a large category. So in order to get the right answer to people, one is describe the situation or the type of business, and then to be able to go and look for the applicable requirements. I deal with this, some days it's most of my day. Every day, it's at least part of my day. And it's just really important, in my view, that I take time to talk this through with people. Those who have email, I always email the latest order to them and direct them to the particular provisions. But that's one of the complexities that can sometimes take a little time to talk through a situation. Or what sort of an event is it? Is it indoor? Is it outdoor? Is it a wedding? Is it a baptism? Is it a graduation? There are particular allowances depending on the situation. So I hope that's helpful, just to sort of describe a little bit of the order itself. And I would be glad to try to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Where can the public go to see the most recent current information from the county?
Okay. We do not have a county-specific public health order. We administer the state. And so, the one place to go is the State Health Department, and it's just COVID-19 Colorado. If you Google that term, that will take you to the State Health Department page for COVID-19. There's more information than you want. And then, if you, there will be a tab for executive orders and public health orders. Executive orders are the ones issued by the governor. Public health orders, of course, by the State Health Department. And you want to look for the eighth amended public health order, and you click on it, and it's right there. The older versions are there too, but be sure to get the latest.
Sure. And the website that I keep seeing in our briefing meetings for Montrose County is the montrosecountyjic.com email. There are probably links directly to that state. But if people are looking for their local county public health, that's where they can find that as well, correct?
Yes. Or you can just go to montrosecounty.net, our county webpage. And when you open that up, you'll see the little icon of the virus, and you just click on that, and it'll take you to the same page.
And I assume that if folks have questions, whether they're a business owner or whatever, if they live here and they have follow-up questions, contact information, the hotline number for local is all on that website.
Yes. And they can also call me directly. Let me give you my desk phone. I am glad to talk to people. And, you know, most folks just want to get the right answer, and I am glad to do that. My direct line is 252-5067.
Great, thank you. And I believe Counselor Frank had a question?
Yes, Mr. Austin. I was wondering if you could speak briefly on the recent variants granted to the county and the impact on the governor's latest closures of bars and certain other businesses, and how that impacted Montrose's businesses in those areas.
Oh, good question. I'll be glad to answer that. We submitted our second variance request. It's been a few weeks ago now. And I heard back from the State Health Department on June 26th, I believe that was a Thursday or Friday. They responded in writing to our variance request. Unfortunately, a lot of the answer, in our view here, we had several people review this, it was not explicitly and clearly stated. If we don't get a clear answer as the Health Department, for heaven's sake, you know, our citizens are not going to understand it. And so, I have requested clarification twice from the State Health Department. They've indicated a willingness. And the reason I say that is, in our variance request, we made, we line itemed very specifically for different types of businesses exactly what we were asking for. And we got a rather generalized narrative response. And I have requested the State Health Department to just follow the formatting for each line item, just very simply say, maybe, you know, approved, submitted, denied, or approved with conditions, just something like that, so that we would be very clear. We do not want to give out erroneous information unknowingly to our citizens that may be reversed. I do not want to do that to people. But there were a couple of areas that were clear in their response, and bars were one of them. You're aware that the governor went back and issued somewhat of a closure order on bars because of the increase in cases. However, we had already received the variance, and that, here's the one sentence that applies to bars here in Montrose County. Bars must follow the restaurant requirements and guidelines to operate, but they are not required to serve food. So it's very simple to go in the public health order, go to the appendix for restaurants, and say, "Follow-up," and you can be open.
Great, thank you. Do my fellow councilors have any additional questions?
Just for clarification, that if any bar owner or business owner has a question, they can certainly contact you, and you would be more than happy to answer any questions as far as what their particular business, the requirements and requisite safety measures are required, correct?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I think to go one step further, since this is a city council meeting, I'll just reiterate that the city of Montrose doesn't have anything different than the county. We don't have public health. That's not what we do. The county has done an excellent job managing this. The partnership between the city and the county has been great. This is the third meeting today that Jim Austin and I have been on together, talking about COVID. So there's a lot of communication back and forth, and there are no separate rules about inside the city or outside the city when it comes to COVID and what's allowed.
That's right.
Great, thank you very much. Hey, I really appreciate you, again, on short notice, dropping by our meeting and talking about COVID for yet another hour of your day. Really appreciate it. And thank you so much for giving out all that good information, contact information.
All right, glad to be here. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, great. Moving on, next on our agenda item is Agenda Item 5, which is the Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. So this is the time during our meeting that if you have joined us and you'd like to share something that's on your mind with your city councilors, and it's not something we're going to talk about later, this is the time where we set aside time to hear from you. And if there is anyone, I'm looking at our attendees in the attendee room, and I don't see anyone raising their hand, which would be the way to let me know. Okay. It looks like there is no one tonight who wants to make a public comment. I know that when we do these meetings online, it's difficult, and I'm trying to make them be as much like a normal city council meeting. I'm stalling a little in case someone's looking for the button. Okay. We are going to move on and continue then with our agenda for tonight. Thank you. Okay. Item number six is the approval of our minutes. So I need a fellow counselor to make a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 16, 2020 regular city council meeting and the July 1, 2020 spatial council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Great. We have John Renfro. There we go, thank you. So we have a motion from Counselor Glassbell and a second from Counselor Frank. I'll ask our City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo to call, not call roll, but to take the vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. So once our meeting minutes are approved like that, they are posted to our website. So anyone who wants to read those, once they're approved, then they show up. Thank you. Next, item seven is Ordinance 2503 on Second Reading. This is Council Consideration of an Ordinance for the City of Montrose, amending the zoning district designation of lots 1 through 10, 13, 15 through 28, and 36 through 56 in the Estates at Stone Ridge from R2 Low Density District to R3 Medium Density District. I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Sharp, who will run the rest of the meeting.
Sorry. I do have a bit tonight, huh? And I noticed somebody just started vacuuming out in our hallway. So if it starts getting too loud, let me know. My door's closed, but hopefully it doesn't start buzzing too much back there. Okay, all right. I'm going to share my screen for the first presentation here. Hey, can you see that? All right, I'm just going to review the previous stages of the rezone schedule for this project. On May 27th, we had the Planning Commission zoning hearing. On June 1st, we had the City Council Work Session Overview. And then on June 16th, we had the City Council zoning hearing and first reading of the zoning ordinance, and tonight is the second reading of the zoning ordinance. This first map is just a general vicinity map to show you where the project is located at. This project is the Estates at Stone Ridge subdivision, which is located kind of back behind Walmart. So it's north of Otter Road, and it's in between South Townsend Avenue and Woodgate Road. So this yellow outline shows the Estates at Stone Ridge. The kind of gray area is city limits, and the area that's not highlighted in gray, kind of just to the left of it, would not be within city limits. As the mayor mentioned, this is a rezone application for lots 1 through 10, 13, 15 through 28, and 36 through 56. So the request is to rezone from R2 Low Density District to the R3 Medium Density District. And R3 Medium Density District, single-family homes and duplexes are both used as by right. As you can see from this map, the remaining portion, and I'll kind of point to it, hopefully you can see my pointer, other portions of the Estates at Stone Ridge are also zoned R3. The area to the east is zoned R2, to the south is R1A, and then to the west is county. So according to our code, Section 4429, rezoning, these are the kind of regulations for our rezoning protocols. I'll kind of let you read through those, and those are in your packet as well. I read through all that, because I know you guys have seen this a couple times now. But that is our criteria for determining a rezone. In addition, when we rezone, the rezoning has to be in conformity with the master plan. So I've made a little black mark down here where the Estates at Stone Ridge is, and the black arrow kind of points to that. And this area is located, listed as Residential Mixed Density Low in the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. And what that means is that this low-density residential land use is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of the existing residential development in Montrose. And in addition to single-family homes, it also allows small amounts of attached residential dwelling units, such as duplexes and small groups of townhomes. So it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The intent of the R3 Medium Density District, according to our code, is intended to provide an area that's suitable for single-family homes and duplexes. We went over this a little bit in the past, and I just put it in here in your packet in the presentation for reference. We had some questions last time about the differences in the setbacks and the minimum lot size for the R2 versus the R3. And so, you can see there that the minimum lot size is a little different for R2 versus R3, just shown right here, the 75 versus 6250. The front setbacks are a little different. Rear setbacks are a little different. Side is almost the same, and then corner lots are a little different. The maximum building height is exactly the same for R2 and R3. So on May 27th, the Planning Commission did recommend approval to rezone these properties from the R2 to the R3 Medium Density District, and it was a unanimous vote. This map shows a general overview of the Estates at Stone Ridge, so you can kind of see what this area looks like, although I'm sure most of you are familiar with this. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the rezone criteria stated in Section 4429 of our code. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The proposal does meet the intent of the R3 Medium Density District and is compatible with the existing uses and zoning of the surrounding area, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezone to the R3 Medium Density District. All I have for that one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sharp. Counsel, this is, we've seen this multiple times, like all ordinances, we read them and vote on them twice, so that, I guess that means we really mean it. So are there any questions the second time around? Okay, that's usually the case when we have a second reading on something, and it's not because we haven't given it a lot of consideration already. It's because this is the second time we voted on the exact same thing. So, that being said, I will ask if a fellow counselor would like to make a motion.
Do we have any public comment?
Oh, thank you. Of course, I appreciate that. This is, there is an opportunity, like every agenda item, for public comment on this particular item. And I'm looking at the attendees in the room, and I can unmute any of them if they simply can raise their hand per the Zoom bar on their screen. I don't see any. They are equally quiet, just like us. They've seen this already before. Thanks for the reminder, though. So now I can entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2503 on Second Reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second. So, Mr. Piccolo, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Bynum?
Barbara Bynum? Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Moving on on our agenda, item eight, which is the Hilltop Addition Annexation. And this particular item has multiple pieces to it. So we'll have a resolution followed by an ordinance, and there will be an opportunity for public comment on the resolution and an opportunity for a public hearing on the ordinance piece. So they're kind of packaged together, but we vote on them separately. I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you again. So I'm going to do this kind of like we did on the last annexation. I know that since they kind of go together, the presentation's going to be all together, the annexation and the zoning together, and then I'll let you decide how you want to do public comment on that. Also, in addition, after I finish my presentation, I know that the representative for the applicant, Mr. Ivan Gier, would like to provide some information as well after my presentation. So just wanted to put that out there. My screen here. All right, same thing. I'll give a brief overview of the annexation schedule. I'll give a brief overview of the annexation schedule. On May 18th, we had the council work session overview. June 2nd was the council resolution to set a hearing date. The planning commission zoning hearing was on June 10th. On June 17th, the annexation impact report was delivered to Montrose County. And then tonight is the first reading of the annexation ordinance and zoning ordinance. And then on July 21st will be the second reading of both. This map shows the area of where the Hilltop Edition or the project area is located. This is north of Main Street and just north of Locust Road. It's located also just off of County Road 6600 Road. So the Hilltop Edition is a proposed annexation that's 15.75 acres in size, a parcel located at 6600 Road, north of Locust Road, in between 6600 Road and 6650 Road. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the tri-county water service area, and the city sewer service area. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to the city limits, which supports annexation. The applicant on this project has stated that their intention for this project is to develop a senior living community with approximately 125 townhome units. And this picture is just kind of a picture like where I posted the sign, but you can kind of see what that area looks like as well. So this gets into the zoning, which is kind of the second ordinance, but goes along with it. The zoning of the area directly to the south is R4, and the applicant is requesting R4 for the zoning of their parcel as well after it is annexed. The R4 high-density district is intended to provide for high-density multifamily residences and to allow for variable densities. So this allows a variety in the type of residences that can be built on the property. At the June 10th meeting, the planning commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request of R4. So an annexation agreement is required as a condition of this annexation due to the size. Annexation agreement provides for a variety of things, including utility extensions, easements, city operation and police service fees, a fee in lieu of park development. And then this photo is to show kind of an example of the, so we do a, the 6600 Road Wideaway dedication is included in this annexation agreement, including 40 feet east from the existing road center line on the subject property. So a portion of the 6600 Road Wideaway is currently dedicated to Montrose County. That's the part that's in orange. That's not included in this annexation, but it could be annexed by the city as a future separate action. So any additional portion of the existing 6600 Road that is not yet dedicated to the county as a right-of-way could be dedicated to the city if the owner of that parcel seeks annexation in the future. So this project does adhere to our comprehensive plan, land use chapter three. Same thing, this one is highlighted or shown in a black, then the arrow points to it, and it's in that orange area, which is listed as residential mixed density medium in the future land use map. And in our land use plan, it says the majority of mixed-density, medium residential land uses are designated in areas that are not yet developed. This district provides for a variety of residential types, mixed within a neighborhood, and it includes single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes, which is what the applicant is looking for. So this area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth is contiguous to city limits, which supports annexation. An annexation agreement is needed, will be prepared. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the annexation and also of the R4 high-density district. And I'll turn that over to Ivan, if that's appropriate for you guys as well, unless you have questions for me first.
Council, do you want to ask Amy Sharp questions first? It looks like we do. Councillor Anderson?
Yeah, Amy, I'm curious why at the same time we wouldn't annex, was it 6400, the road there that you said is currently in the county and not part of this annexation? Why wouldn't the city annex it at the same time as the adjacent property?
We looked into that as well, and we determined that it would have to be a future separate action and not part of the Hilltop Edition. So we have that on our list to hopefully pursue right after this.
I see, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I see a panelist raising their hand. So Mr. Gier, could you please introduce yourself and then share your comments with the city council?
Hi, thanks Barbara, thanks Amy for the presentation. This is Ivan Gier. I am with River City Consultants. I'm the engineer and representative for the applicant Hilltop. You just want to reiterate that our request aligns with the comprehensive plan, development code, and is supported by staff, you know, with the adjacent zoning of R4. The only thing that's probably a little bit different, since the initial application is our future plan of units, probably ranges from 125 to 250 units. A lot has changed in the world since we submitted our original application. We need some flexibility to meet the market demand. The R4 zoning gives us the flexibility we need in some of the unit sizing when it comes to the multifamily or attached housing in terms of having a little bit smaller lot than the zones below R4. The project's going to be a multi-year, multi-phased approach. You know, if you're talking about 125 to 250 units and a population of 20,000 people, the market absorption is going to be, you know, relatively slow. We do plan on one, possibly two multifamily buildings. We don't have any plans yet, as it's difficult to invest in plans when you don't have your zoning. But we do expect to have a lot of feathering out of, from south to north, detached and detached, single-family units. Definitely looking for the flexibility in size to be able to provide affordable housing. One of the things that's happened in the market over the last 10, 20 years is construction costs, both horizontal and vertical, have exceeded the regular GDP as well as the general CPI. So being able to deal with that pressure and provide a product that has some density makes it affordable for people, and my client is definitely interested in servicing the senior housing market, which is, aligns with the existing conditions in your comprehensive plan study that's going on today, the fastest-growing segment of your, of your housing market is the senior housing market. So, so appreciate the time and look forward to any questions.
Great, thank you. Councillor Frank, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Gier, can you achieve the same basic footprints with an R3 designation because of the setbacks and lot sizes? Can you still achieve duplexes of the size you want to do with an R3?
So that was a question that came up at the planning commission hearing, and we're, we're, to have the flexibility that we need, the R4 zoning provides us that level of flexibility. If we, if we go down to R3A, that lot size might not fit some of the different ideas that my client is considering. But at this stage in the game, we, we haven't really created any plans or invested in any planning documents, because, you know, we don't have that zoning to work off of.
Additional council members have any questions for either city staff or our guests? I'll look at our attendee list. So I think what makes the most sense now is to, since the vote is broken into two different votes, I'll also do the public comment that way. So first we'll have public comment on the resolution, which is annexing. So that has nothing to do with zoning. That's annexing this property to the city, and there's some basic requirements for that. So are there any public comments in regard to council looking at the resolution that annexes this property per the landowner's request into the city? I don't see any. So before we take comments on the zoning, we'll first do a council vote with them. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we, as a council, approve resolution 2020-12. Oh, wait a minute, am I in the right place?
You are, yeah, you are. It's the annexation piece, yes.
Yeah, so I move that we accept that as presented.
Great, thank you. There's a motion, a first?
I'll second it.
Great, and a second by councillor Anderson. So I'll turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glasbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. And now we'll address the second piece of item number eight, which is ordinance 2504 on first reading. And this is the ordinance that sets the... It says for the annexation. Okay, so this isn't even the zoning yet. We're still on the annexation. So it's a two-part thing, first the resolution and then an ordinance. So any further questions about annexing this property from council or from attendees? I officially hold a hearing when it comes to an ordinance for an annexation. So I'll open the hearing. I don't have a gavel at home. I haven't had a gavel for months, so I don't see any comments, so I'll officially close the hearing and entertain a motion for the ordinance 2504.
I move to approve ordinance 2504 as presented.
Great, we have a first, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Glasbell. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Piccolo for a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glasbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye, excuse me, aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Now we move on to item nine, which is the ordinance that establishes zoning. So now we have a new piece of city property that comes into the city without zoning, so it needs to establish zoning. And we do that through the ordinance process. And so ordinance 2505 is an ordinance providing for the zoning of the Hilltop Edition as an R4 high-density district. I would turn it over to Amy Sharp, but I think she's done her whole presentation, so I will ask if there's any questions from council before moving on to the public. Okay, no questions? Okay, councillor Frank.
Yeah, Amy, what is the proportion of R4 to R3 and R2 and R1A? Is there a lot of R4 in Montrose?
I'd have to pull up the map. I'm not quite sure on the percentage, but there is R4 throughout the city, just as there is R3. And you saw on that zoning map, and it's in your package, that the property directly to the south of this one is R4, and that's why staff had recommended that it be R4 as well to match up with the adjacent zoning and also to meet the needs of the client.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have an answer for you on the exact amount.
But that property just right to the south is already in the city and already zoned for R4?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, so for public comment, we technically hold a hearing. I will open the hearing, and I will say that council received some written correspondence regarding this, and then a follow-up email this afternoon with some additional comments. So I want to make sure that all of my fellow councillors had a chance to see that memo that we received this afternoon. I'm seeing nodding, I'm seeing thumbs up. Great, okay, because we would want to make sure we all have that. Thanks for being good about checking your emails before meeting. I'm looking for hands in our attendees column here on Zoom who would like to comment. I will officially open the hearing. I never officially did that. Okay, and now I'm moving into our room, so to speak, and I see John Renfro with his real hand up in the air. And so, John Renfro, I will turn it over to you for comment.
Can you hear me?
We can. Remember, start by introducing yourself, please.
So my name is John Renfro. I'm at 760 6600 Road. I'm just down the road from this particular development. I think just a couple of different things. First of all, just for Ivan and Jason, I was the person that submitted the letter that went through. Since the last time of planning, I did go through, and I did two additional neighborhoods around, and I got additional signatures that we got through. I got 53 signatures. So I just want you guys to understand, to get that amount of signatures in this time is extremely difficult in our market space, especially with the COVID pandemic and some of the other stuff kind of going on there. I probably could have gotten up to 80, but there were several individuals who had not opened their door, did not want to touch the pin, other stuff like that to communicate. My goal was to get 100 to 200 signatures. So I just want the council to understand that there is not very many people that are in support of this high density of a zone in the area whatsoever. I did find one, and I want to disclose that and be totally open and honest with you guys, because I have relationship all around. I mean, Hilltop's a client of mine. I've worked with a lot with the city, and I just need to make sure that I'm doing a good job with all the neighbors that I currently have, because they are really pushing me forward in order to speak on their behalf for a lot of those things, just because some of them, we can't come before city council or other stuff like that. The technology for many of the people primarily in Crossroads is foreign to them going on and doing a Zoom call. Other things I wanted to highlight, it was not a unanimous vote at planning at all. So just to make sure it was approved, I think that if I would have had more time, got more signatures, had more clear argumentation, I think I could have been better with that. It was not a full unanimous vote when we went through with that. So I think that that's important to know. With regards to the R4 zoning, you know, just to highlight for the council member as well as for staff, I've been working with the city of Montrose for 15 years. I helped out extensively with the planning department quite a bit. R4 zone, we have not done an R4 zone, to my knowledge, from a zoning aspect, since I've been here. Okay, R4 zone was meant to be for a metro area when the code was created. That is the highest-density allotment that we can have associated with that. So the concern that I have, as well as a lot of the neighbors, is that if Hilltop does not go forward with this development, and they sell the property to someone in the future, that zoning goes with the property, and then it's going to be some affordable housing development when they go through. The other thing I want to highlight, when it comes to the master plan, I'm not in agreement with that it is in compliance for high-density zoning whatsoever. It's medium to low, not high, density. So I don't think it is in compliance with regards to the, to the comprehensive plan. I think that's an important note for you guys to pick up on. The last thing that I think is really important, since I was part of the Crossroads development, so here's the thing, when the Crossroads development was done, that was R4 zone, but it was not the entire piece. If you look at the zoning map, we went through and we did the additional piece next to the east of the property, and we did that as R3 zoning in order to allow for duplex units and other stuff for that particular subdivision. So when you look at the zoning map, it's R4, because that was historically set. That R4 zoning was supposed to be obsoleted, was the original intent, at least it was probably five to 10 years ago, because we were trying to shift everything down to an R3 or an R3A, just because of the density capacity that we have with that stuff. So when you're looking at the map, it's actually both zones that are there when we went through when we did that stuff. What I want to kind of do is just come before you guys as council members and just say, you know, look, here's the deal. I know it's been approved by staff. I don't agree with the staff. I know it's been approved by planning. It was not a unanimous vote. I'm just looking to kind of go through and say, you know, look, either give some additional stipulations on what they're going to go through, or recommend that they're going to go through and do the R3 zone. I've talked to the people at Hilltop. It seems very compliant for what they are planning on doing. It's very close to the cottages for what they are going to make happen. And so therefore, a conditional use permit is not that big of a deal. So if they want something more in an R6, if they want something like a sixplex or other stuff like that, they can do a conditional use permit similar to what we did down at Four Corners, which is the multi-story development down... um, down, uh, next to City Market South. That gave additional public comment to the people. That was sold prior to, so the public could come through and say, what additional stuff do we want to do? We have road improvements, we want architecture, we want landscaping. We want it approved or not. We were able to vet that out prior to that construction. That is not an option here if this gets approved as R4 immediately. And I don't think that they have future plans right now, immediately for this project. I think it's probably going to be five years out before they go through and start the construction for this, which is a long time, if they do it at all or if they sell it. And so that's the concern that I had. I'm not opposed to the zoning whatsoever. There were several people on here that did not want to do the zone, but that's not why I'm speaking right now. I think I'm totally fine going through with the zone. I'm just...
I think you mean annexation. You keep saying you're not opposed to the zone.
Yes, annexation. Thank you for clarifying, Barbara. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at, um, with that stuff. And hopefully that answers your questions, um, the best that I can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Renfro. I appreciate your comments. I've been studying the overall zoning map of the city while you were talking. We do have a lot of pockets of R4 zoning within the city. And anyway, um, are there questions from council before we start? Or first, I should say, are there additional, um, comments during the public hearing portion of our meeting? I see a hand up from Mr. Gear, and then I see a hand up from Mr. Barry, in that order. Mr. Gear, do you want to unmute yourself and make some comments?
I'll let, um, I'll let Jackson Berry, um, with Hilltop, uh, speak to, respond to Mr. Renfro's comments.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Barry, can you please introduce yourself?
I'm Jackson Berry with Hilltop Community Resources. I'm in Grand Junction, Colorado. Um, so the, the question that we, I mean, we'd like to have the option of doing an R4 zone, uh, because we won't have to come back, as Mr. Renfro mentioned, to do a conditional use permit if there's something that would fit the character of the development that is not a duplex, but maybe it's a three-plex attached or a four-plex attached, uh, type of property. Um, and then to, Dave Frank had a good question about where R4 is going, going to be approved or where it is currently existing in the city. And, you know, this, this property is just north of Main Street, and it's close to the city core. Uh, where in the future would you like to have high-density construction in the city of Montrose to accommodate not only the aging population, but those who have, who, who aren't going to be able to afford larger lot-size, uh, residences? Is it north of this? Or, I mean, where, where would it naturally fit? Um, and then my third comment on that is, uh, the city approved a comprehensive plan in order to establish the natural growth and development of the city. And, uh, this is pretty much in the heart of the, it is in the heart of the urban growth area. And it, it makes sense to me to, to approve the R4 zone, particularly because it is adjacent to an existing R4 zone. The intention isn't to provide population. I, I mean, if we couldn't build, uh, enough units on this property to house, uh, you know, a thousand people, that's not the intention. But we would like to, to be able to use some creativity for a mixed set of uses on the site, because it's 15 acres. It's a large piece of property.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Mr. Renfro, and then we'll see if there's anyone else for the public hearing.
So, so Jackson, I, thank you, councilman.
You have, you have to adjust us, not Mr. Ja- not Jackson. I just want to make sure we don't get into a back and forth. So your comments...
Uh, I was addressing both.
Okay.
I, I said, Jackson and councilman, thank you. So I, I, I want to say thank you both. So, we're going through and doing that. Um, so one thing I just want to make sure, just from the commercial real estate and development, I mean, the amount of multifamily stuff that I see go through my office, um, i- it runs with the ground. If, 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 if Hilltop owns the property and they're going to go through and do it, this is, this is not a big deal, okay? They, they need the additional flexibility. But I also know that Hilltop's sold and flipped properties in the past. And so there's no guarantee that they'll go through with this development. That's the problem that I see. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Barry?
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, council members, Mr. Renfro, I, it, it's true that, you know, Hilltop has the option to sell the property in the future. Um, the intention is to go ahead and develop the property. The intention at this point is not to re- rezone, annex, and then sell the property. We'd like to see a nice development that goes in, similar to what you see at the Crossroads, but may have, involve, uh, a different mix of property types. Um, I forgot the, the next portion that I was going to say about that, but, um... So if we have, so, right, so we could flip, so we could, we could turn around and sell. That is a possibility. But in any case, what is the intention for the property? Do we, I mean, do you want to limit the, the density to an R3A? Or would you want to allow for future development in that area, uh, for an R4 opportunity?
Thank you. I do not see any further public comments for our hearing portion of the meeting. So I'm going to close the hearing portion and move on to the council discussion portion of the meeting. Anyone dying to start discussion? Okay, I'll kick it off. I think both the comments, um, from Mr. Gear and from Mr. Renfro are, are great examples of the kind of things that I think about as a counselor when making a decision like this. Um, you want to acknowledge that you're listening to the neighborhood and the people who live in the area, but you also want to make the decision that you think is overall in line with the city's master plan, the city's, um, zoning and land use codes that honors the Planning Commission process. And I know that one comment I've heard a lot as I, as I ran for city council was the need to do something about housing. And one of the platforms I ran was to expand housing options in our community. Of course, that needs to be done correctly. And, and like I said, following our, our city, um, master plan and our land use regulations, and I think this does that. I think it expands housing opportunities in our community while following our existing protocols. Anything, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell.
I just like, you know, there are no, there's always questions about traffic and increasing the size of the roads to handle additional traffic as a city expands afterwards in many cases. And I think that in this particular situation, the public works folks are already aware of this potential. So I think that the, the concern about roads is one that you, you sort of build something and then have to build the roads to manage it. In this particular case, the developer will not have to develop that particular road. I believe I'm right on that, Amy, because it's a piece being annexed in next to it. The other thing, point that I would make, I also live in this neighborhood, and I do not personally see it as a, as a serious concern. Uh, so for where it's worth it, those are my comments. And I just asked Amy to comment on the road itself, what the city will have to do at some point in time.
I think I saw our city engineer, Scott Murphy, raise his hand and maybe addressing that point and question.
Yes, that came up a little bit, the Planning Commission too. So, uh, right now, it's a, a single lane in each direction, um, kind of an old county road that is, you know, slowly kind of becoming into the city. So, um, the way that this process works, so because this is a fresh kind of process, once they have a proposal of what the proposed land use would be and the trip generation would be, they would do the traffic studies. Um, at that point, um, it's up to the city to decide, you know, so that is depending on how far they go on the density. Um, there may be improvements required to support that even, you know, right out of the gate. If that's the case, then it's a case-by-case basis discussing with the city who is responsible for that. So, you know, if the city does have in their long-range plan, um, it's going to fall shortly behind and, and serves the entire area. Um, usually, those are the kind of things that we do participate with. If it's, you know, turn lanes or just the frontage that needed, they need to improve, um, to support their development right off the bat, um, that's usually, uh, done by the development. But it is negotiated on a case-by-case basis. So it's, at this point, there's no saying it's the developer's issue or ours. Um, that's, that can is kind of kicked down the road until we have the, the data to show what is needed and then talk about the price and who does it win.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Frank?
Yeah, Scott, um, does the zoning, if it's an R4 zoning, does that, I guess, move up the primacy of that conversation versus being an R3?
Um, it fundamentally just comes back to, uh, what do you need to support whatever they end up proposing from a land use standpoint? Um, so regardless of the zoning, if they have X cars coming onto the road and X minus five creates a problem, you know, we have a problem and it needs to be addressed. So that's, those discussions are held, um, independent of...
Hey, wait.
Did that answer your question?
Okay. Any other discussion from council on this? No comments? Okay, Counselor Frank?
I, I just want people to know, uh, I spent a number of years, six years on the County Planning Commission. And in support of our Planning Commission on the city side, rezoning is not something that is taken lightly. It is not something that is taken arbitrarily. It is usually something that a lot of thought and planning goes into. And I just want people to understand that, uh, the process is very exhaustive and the discussion is very deep on a Planning Commission level when it comes to rezoning issues. And that, I want the public to know that this isn't just an arbitrary decision based on purely on the applicant's position on needing that. There's a lot of depth to it.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Um, I also, during my campaign, people talked to me about affordable housing and especially for older, uh, seniors, um, who can't afford a big lot necessarily in a large home. And there's a, a critical need, I think, in our community. And, and no one project's going to fix everything, but I think this is a need that we need to acknowledge. And I feel comfortable because there are similar developments in that same area. And, um, you know, these, these places need to be developed where they're in proximity to downtown and shopping and other things. And so, um, I, I think it makes a lot of sense from my perspective, from what I've heard around town.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion. Any other thoughts or comments from council before someone makes a motion? I don't see anyone else wanting to make a comment, so a motion would be appropriate.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2505 on first reading as presented.
Time goes to Counselor Bowman, who I think started talking first. So we have a motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell and a second by Counselor Bowman, and I will turn it over to Ms. DePico.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, if you are just here for that particular item, you are welcome to stay, but we will not consider you rude if you, um, if you just disappear from the screen. And if that's the case, thank you very much for coming to our council meeting tonight. Moving on to number 10, that's River Crossing Addition Annexation, which is, um, we're going to do it again. An annexation comes with first a resolution with public comment opportunity and second, an ordinance on first reading with a public hearing. So I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Sharp before we come back to the opportunities for public comment.
All right, thank you. Once again, I'm going to do a combined presentation that's on the annexation and the zoning together. And after my presentation, um, John Renfro, who is, um, representing the applicant, would like to, um, I think, present something as well after my presentation. So whenever you feel that's appropriate, I know he has something to add as well. Let me share my screen here. I'm down to only two presentations open, so I should get lucky, huh? Okay. So this is an overview of the annexation schedule, which is identical to the one that we just had. On May 18th, we had the council work session overview. June 2nd was the council resolution to set a hearing date. The Planning Commission zoning hearing was on June 10th. On June 17th, we delivered the annexation impact report to Montrose County. And tonight is the first reading of the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance, and then July 21st will be the second reading. This first map shows the, um, general vicinity of the project area. So this is actually just west of Home Depot. So it's mostly south of Ogden Road, but there's a little slither there that runs north as well, and it kind of runs along the river. So the River Crossing Addition is a proposed annexation that's approximately 36.33 acres in size. Um, as you can see on the map to the right, it's located just west of South Townsend Avenue and between Ogden Road and South Rio Grande Avenue. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water and city sewer service area. And as you can see on this map, once again, the area that's kind of shaded are all city limits. So you can tell that the area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits, which supports the annexation policies. Um, the applicant has stated that their intention here is to develop residential multifamily units and also general commercial retail. As you can see from this map, you can see what the surrounding zoning of the area is. Um, the zoning is B2, which is highway commercial to the north and a little bit to the east, some to the south, kind of the southeast. Um, there's B3, which is directly east and some to the south, which is general commercial, and then P Public. Uh, the applicant is requesting a B3 general commercial district for this, um, annexation. The B3 general commercial district is intended for a large variety of uses that requires large storage areas to conveniently serve customers. And on June 10th, at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request of B3. So this annexation will also require an annexation agreement as a condition of the annexation. The agreement provides for utility extensions and easements, city operations and police service fees, a fee in lieu of park development, um, Ogden Road and South Rio Grande right-of-way dedication, as well as a roundabout intersection for Ogden Road and South Rio Grande Avenue, a 20-foot right-of-way or recreational trail easement for construction of a concrete recreational path running north and south through the property, immediately east of the Uncompagri River. And then any ditches in existing or newly dedicated right-of-way should also be relocated. This project is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. As you can see here, the black arrow once again points to the black area that is the project area and is located in the red, which is general commercial. This land is for auto-oriented uses or uses such as the South Townsend Commercial area. It provides a wide range of general retail goods and services. Even though it's auto-oriented, development in this district should also have interconnected parking lots and connected pedestrian ways to minimize traffic congestion. This land use requires access to both major and minor arterial streets and significant buffering from incompatible adjacent uses. As you can see from the previous, um, zoning map, it is very similar to, and identical to a lot of the adjacent zoning. The area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth is contiguous to city limits, which supports annexation policies. The annexation agreement is needed and will be provided as part of this project. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. And therefore, staff recommends approval of both the annexation and the B3 general commercial district. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, before we move on, are there questions from council specifically for Amy Sharp? Okay, Counselor Anderson?
So I think I heard...
So I think I heard you say near the beginning that the intent here was for some high density residential as well as commercial. Is that right, Amy?
Correct. Multi-family uses and general commercial.
Right, so B three would allow all that mix, correct?
Correct.
Looking ahead here, I know.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, and, and so this annexation agreement looks, looks good from, from a city perspective in terms of our infrastructure because it helps to complete South Rio Grande as well as yesterday at the work session, I believe Scott talked about Ogden eventually going further west. And so this would enable all that someday, correct?
It does. It connects a lot of the dots, you could say.
Cool. Okay, that's all I wondered. Thank you.
Are there questions from counsel before I move on to any of our guest speakers? Okay, so I see we have a number of people perhaps who want to comment on this. I'm not sure where to begin.
I think probably with John, I think he had either a presentation or something he wanted to add to what I had.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. John Renfro.
My name is John Renfro, seven sixty sixty six hundred Road, in case you guys hadn't seen my face before. So I, I think when it comes to the application that's going through, I'm just super excited with this particular development. It completes the hole that goes in, that surrounds this. This has been a legacy piece that has been outstanding for some time when they're going through with that. I think the zoning is totally appropriate, meets the zoning master plan with we're going through with that. Just to let you guys know, the applicant, also Chad Horning, who is the owner of Telluride Ski Area, he's waving right down there. He is available for comments and questions as well, down there as well. Because we're trying to get a much tighter connection here between Telluride and Montrose. And I think it's going to be a really good relationship to develop into the future. So this is just part of the piece of that plan. And so part of us doing an introduction with Chad to you guys, to city council and to some of the staff as well. Because I think we're going to have a great partnership in the future. So if you guys have any questions for me or for Chad and his engineer, Steve Stevenson is also here as well, can answer any of those questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Renfro. Does counsel have any questions for either Mr. Renfro, Mr. Horning or Mr. Stevenson tonight? About either the annexation or the zoning request? Okay, I don't see any, so I'm going to follow the procedures of asking. We're going to have two opportunities for public comment. The first is on a resolution and then technically I open a hearing for the ordinance. So any public comment? For either, let me open the hearing. How about that? I don't see any hands raising. And I want to cut anyone off, but I don't see anyone who hasn't already had an opportunity to say their piece. So I will officially close the hearing. And circle back to the resolution for a further discussion and a motion by counsel.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen as presented.
I second it.
Great, we have a motion and a second, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Del Piccolo to take a vote.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. And now we move on to the ordinance piece, which is ordinance twenty five zero six on first reading. And I really want to make sure, we've already done the, the public piece, but I just really want to make sure no one feels like they were waiting because we haven't voted on the first piece yet. Don't see any hands. Any further discussion by counsel? Don't see any, oh wait, maybe, Mr. Bowman.
I'm trying to get to the map. I get my question is, I know that this piece of property is located, I don't know if it's right on the river, but it's near the river. And I just want to make sure that there'll be public access to the river. When we've sort of, as, as we, as counsel has looked at development around the river, we make sure that there is public access the whole way. So my question is, and maybe John can answer it, or Amy, does this impact the public's ability to get to the river?
Great question. It looks like Mr. Horning has an answer for us. So I'm going to unmute you. Oh, I unmuted you and you unmuted you and we double did it. Okay, there you go. Mr. Horning, welcome. If, if you would introduce yourself.
Yes, this is, my name is Chad Horning and it says John Renfro at the bottom because I felt like I needed, you know, a better image than my own name to join the meeting today. No, I apologize, but John sent me the link and so it says his name, but I'm Chad Horning. I live in Mountain Village up here in near Telluride. So yeah, Mr. Bowman, the public access issue is a really important thing to us. We're making it a big priority. So the, the trail and alignment of the trail, the visibility to the river and the incorporation of that is a major part of our plan. And it's a major part of our development. And it's, it's, I think it's a priority to city and it's separately a priority for us. So we're not going to be, as a developer, we're going to be enhancing that, not being in the way of it whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Horning.
Okay, and now, and now I see that our city engineer, Scott Murphy, maybe has a comment because that's all well and good, but a developer can change their mind. So, Mr. Murphy, what's in place to protect that river access from the city's standpoint?
And this one's set up really well. So yeah, the annexation agreement does commit the, the trail easement along the river. This one's also great in that we own almost our, yeah, essentially the entire river frontage along this property already. So, so it's just another great, kind of like the U R A where creates great synergies where we own the public space and then work with them to interface the two together and make them work for both. It's set up pretty well to do that again on this.
So are you saying that if, if we were looking at a more detailed map and we were really able to drill down, that we'd see right along the river's edge that that's city property? Or do we have a recreation easement?
And let me, yeah, so we own it straight. Can you guys see my screen now? Parcel map?
Yes.
So this is the property that's looking to be annexed right now. And that's the river that we own.
Okay.
So we own a really great, yeah, so it's even better than an easement. We, we will own all of that property.
Great.
It's great.
What a, what a great opportunity for a, a public private partnership to develop that and provide the public access to a river with maybe a neat property and what could go in there. It's exciting. Any other comments or questions from counsel? Okay. I'm losing track of where we are. Are we on ordinance twenty five zero six?
Yes. I think so. First reading.
Counselor Frank.
I'd make a motion to pass ordinance two five zero six on first reading as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and I want to make sure, did I? I don't know that I technically opened and closed a hearing. And I don't want anyone to say we bypassed any kind of an opportunity for public comment. So let me open a hearing. I don't see anyone wanting to comment under the hearing, so I'll close the hearing. We have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion from counsel? Okay, then I will turn it over to Ms. Del Piccolo.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the work on that from everyone. Moving on to the next item, which is item eleven, and that's ordinance twenty five zero seven. Counsel consideration of ordinance twenty five zero seven on first reading, providing for the zoning of the River Crossing Addition as B three general commercial district. So for those of you still following along, you can see that we're following this process of first annexing through a resolutions and ordinance process. And then next, once we have new property in the city limits, we then zone it. And we turn to our planning commission to make a recommendation. And I will turn it over one more time to Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you. I'll just refer to my previous presentation and if there are any additional questions regarding the zoning, please feel free to ask.
Great. Did anyone have any additional questions on the zoning? Okay, I'm going to officially open a hearing. This is specific to the zoning of this new property. I don't see anyone wishing to comment, so I'll close the hearing that's specific to the zoning. Counsel, is there any discussion on the zoning for this new property? Look how the city just gets bigger and bigger by the minute. Okay. Seeing no discussion, seeing no questions, seeing no public comments for a hearing. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty five oh seven on first reading as presented.
I'll second it.
Great, we have a first from Mayor Protim Glassbell, a second from Counsel Anderson. I'll turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone who came to speak to us specifically about that. Appreciate you coming to our city council meeting. Feel free at any point to leave. You won't be rude, but you're welcome to sit around because we have, we have more planning to do. Moving on, our next agenda item is twelve. It's the center subdivision combined sketch plan and preliminary plat. So just when we get good at resolutions and ordinances, this is neither. But I will turn it over to Amy Sharp for explanation.
All right, thank you once again. I'll pull up my screen here. I kept wondering if I was going to get the presentation pulled up right for each one and I got lucky, huh? All right. This one's a little different. Like you said, we just got used to annexations since now we'll do preliminary plat or something different. On May eighteenth, we had the council work session overview. On June tenth, we had the planning commission zoning hearing and then not zoning hearing. I'm sorry, that's a typo. That's a hearing to recommend to counsel approval of the combined sketch plan and preliminary plat. Sorry for that typo. And then tonight is the city council hearing to approve or deny the plat. So this first map is a general vicinity map to show you where this new proposed subdivision is located. It's out on East Oak Grove Road. Trying to see if I find the address again. It's fronts on the sixty eight forty road, which is right in here. This is sixty eight forty and then East Oak Grove Road. So the center subdivision combined sketch plan and preliminary plat is a proposed plat that will subdivide Lot Two of the Marabella Minor Subdivision, which consists of twelve point eight acres into five new lots. I'll get into those details a little bit more in the next slide. But right now it has an existing city force main sewer line and existing tri-county water service area to this area. The first one shows a photo of what that area looks like. It's just downhill from Marabella. And then over here on the map, you can see the area highlighted in red as the project site. And the area around, once again, that's kind of shaded in white are city limits and the others are not within city limits. So when we look at approving a new subdivision, we refer to section four seven dash five A two for our subdivision procedures. I don't think I'll read through this whole thing for you because I know you all have this in your packets and can also read this on your screen. But basically, the proposal has to be consistent, once again, with our master plan, the city subdivision regulations, standards and other applicable ordinances. And the following items that are below are reviewed by city staff and our review team to ensure that they meet those requirements. I'll give you just a minute to read those if you need to. And just kind of on a history, on this one, since no engineering was needed, this project wasn't given the approval to proceed with a combined sketch plan and preliminary plat. So sometimes those are done as two separate processes, but because of the nature of it, they were allowed to do it as a combined sketch plan and preliminary plat. According to the comprehensive plan, once again, you can see the area in black that the arrow points to, that's where it's located. It's in that yellow portion. It's listed as residential mixed density low. This low density residential land use is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of the existing residential development in Montrose. In addition to single family homes, it also allows small amounts of attached residential dwelling units such as duplexes and small town homes. The site details, it says already within city limits and it's already zoned R one A. The zoning of the surrounding area kind of to the south is RL. Ignore this yellow. That doesn't really have anything to do with this project. This is RL down here that's gray and it's city limits. The R one A large estate district is intended to provide an area for large, single family residential lots with a semi rural development. And on June tenth, the planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat. So this map, and I think you have this in your packet, this shows how they intend to subdivide it. They want to do five lots. Each lot will be approximately one point seven acres to up to three acres, kind of getting larger as you go east. Lot one already has a building on it, and so there'd be four new ones developed. So staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision procedures and with the comprehensive plan. The proposal does meet the intent of the R one A large district, large estate district. Staff recommends conditional approval of the center subdivision sketch plan and preliminary plat. And what that standard conditional approval means is that the approval of this plat, as you can read here, is conditioned upon ensuring that all our policies, regulation, ordinances and codes are met prior to execution of the final plat. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. I have a question as I look at the city boundaries out there near that. I mean, I, I mean, it's just for curiosity's sake, because I understand we're not annexing it. It's already part of the city. But there's, it seems like there's parcels out there that are part of the city next to parts that aren't. And there's like islands and stuff, and I just didn't think that usually happened. I don't know if this is an appropriate time or that's something you and I can talk about later, like how you get an island that's in the city that doesn't even look like it touches the rest of the city.
Yeah, that's a good question. And obviously, since I haven't been here a long, long time, I'm not sure what the history of that was as far as that getting annexed. It's kind of odd, like you said, there's, and there's more to the east of there that is annexed, but a lot surrounding it that's not yet.
Well, now that I said it out loud, someone can dial back and tell me later.
Sure.
Amy, do you want me to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, go for it.
I can't talk to this specific island. But we have, as a city, avoided forced annexations. And that has resulted in a few of these islands. We can force annex an island. And there are some places where it's tempting. But it's just been kind of a policy for quite a few years that we would not force an area to annex that didn't want to. So that's why we have some of these around town.
Sure, and I understand how that explains how we have, let's call them islands that aren't in the city. But out there, we also have like single lots that are in the city that seem to be surrounded on all sides by nothing in the city. Scott Murphy, did you, did I see you put your hand up maybe?
Yeah, a lot of times those happen from, usually it's a, related to utilities and selling most often sewer. So a lot of times if a, if a septic tank fails, they have to go to the county because the county administers septic tanks under their public health department. And then they'll refer us where we'd like them to come on the city sewer. If we have city sewer in the immediate vicinity, knowing that the town is going to grow out. Once you start getting density, having a connected sewer system is a lot better from a public health standpoint. So a lot of times those will end up annexing into the city in order to utilize our sewer, city sewer services.
Got it. Thank you so much. And again, I, I wasn't trying to confuse the issue because I know it's already annexed. I'm just wanting a little side lesson in the annexation. Okay. So that being said, thank you for the presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions for Amy Sharp about this combined sketch plan and preliminary plat? Okay, then I will accept any public comment on this preliminary plat and combined sketch plan. I don't see any. We're losing them like flies. Our attendees are dropping off, right? So there's less to check on each time. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if a fellow counselor would like to make a motion on this agenda item 12.
I would move that we accept the Center Subdivision Combined Sketch Plan and Preliminary Plat.
We have a motion by Bowman and a second by Counselor Frank, is what I thought I heard? Okay, yes. So, Mr. Piccolo.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have another unanimous vote.
Fantastic, thank you very much. And now that you all are mostly back in offices, I can come by in person and sign things tomorrow, which I haven't done for a while, so looking forward to that and seeing you all. Okay. Item 13 is staff reports, and always we have the public information report. And city manager Bill Bell is spending time with his family, and so I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Ann Morgan-Baylor.
Thank you, Mayor. And tonight, Chief Hall is with us, and he has some information to share with you and to share with the community. Thank you, Chief Hall.
Good evening, City Council. So something I said earlier this week at work session, and I just wanted to reiterate, it's been a pretty busy last couple of weeks for the Montrose Police Department. We've had a lot of high-profile cases to include a pretty tense situation on Sarah E. Lane here just this, just here about a week and a half ago that included the deaths of two of our citizens. I just wanted to throw it out there for our public and also for council that without the support of our citizens, our city council, and our city management team in the passage of 2A, the equipment that we used out there to include a robot, to include a drone, would not have been possible without the funding to make sure that our officers were safe. All of that equipment was necessary based on the severity of the call as we knew it at the time, and it allowed us to clear that house without inserting our police officers first and putting them in danger. So it was very important to have that equipment, and I know that there's kind of a national debate going on as far as what types of equipment police officers or law enforcement should have and how it's used. And so without the passage of 2A, not only that equipment, but also our body-worn cameras, which are in full use now, which makes law enforcement more accountable, and I'm in complete agreement with their usage. Again, wouldn't be possible without our community's help and city council and our city management team. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us tonight. Are there additional comments under public information tonight? No, none?
No, thank you. That's it.
Great. I see that our communications team continues to turn out some good social media information about upcoming events, upcoming programs, upcoming challenges, upcoming fun things that are happening in the city. So I would encourage everyone to continue to check the city's website and to continue to check the city's social media feed for that kind of information. Counsel, any comments from my fellow city counselors? Mr. Anderson?
So for Chief Hall, he thanked us, City Council and the city for, you know, helping fund these things. And I think that we need to thank him for, you know, we can approve, the taxpayers approve money, but then he puts it to work, he and his team. And they've done an excellent job of utilizing those funds in the best possible way for our community. And so I want to acknowledge that and thank you and the whole police department for that, you know, incredible responsibility and using our dollars wisely. The other thing I wanted to comment on real quickly was to thank Mr. Bell for inviting Mr. Austin to come tonight and give the information that he shared with us. I think that's really valuable. And I think all the citizens of Montrose are doing a good job to fight this virus, and I want to thank all the community members that are responsible and doing their part. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Frank?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city staff. They put together a really just funny and fun video about the Fourth of July. And even though some of our citizens did not see any humor in it, I just wanted to say it was great. It was hilarious. And it added a moment of levity to a pretty tense holiday, and it just gave people a chance to chuckle a little bit. I thought it was well done, and thank you.
Yep, thank you, staff. Mayor Protam Glassbell?
I'd just like to comment on a couple of our recreational opportunities. With the lockdown being what it is, I think there has been a tremendous amount of traffic, both on the golf course and on River Bottom Park and our trails. And I think that that is an area that has really helped everybody by being able to get out and utilize those facilities. I think they've done a great job with those.
Great, thank you. Counselor Bowman, anything? Nothing? Okay. I think I got to everybody. Thank you, everyone. I know everyone's working really hard. I know it's been a very busy season. It just seems like, I don't know, seems like March was just two days ago, and yet it also seems like it was a year ago. Thank you so much for your hard work. Did anyone else want to comment, whether they're a department head or a counselor? I want to make sure if anyone had an announcement or anything, they have an opportunity. Okay, great. I'll remind our public that not only do we televise and record and stream these sessions, but our work sessions, which precede our council meetings by a day. So yesterday from 10:00 to noon, we had a work session. Those are also available to view, and lots of good discussion there. So if you're still watching, that means you really like this kind of thing, there's more where this came from, and you can find that on the city's website if you ever want to watch a work session. I invite you to do that. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work, and we'll see you all later.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Done. By acclamation, thank you very much.